All right, well, welcome. We are here for the Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop to go over the Housing Needs Analysis. I'm filling in for the mayor today, so I will turn things over to Melanie to get us started.
Okay, I think we're gonna do a roll call here to start with. Okay, Councillor Dunsborough.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Councillor Dunsborough. Councillor Hughes.
Here.
Councillor Littke.
Here.
Councillor Strobel.
Here.
Councillor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine is out. Okay, and then for the Planning Commission, Commissioner Hartwig, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Ennis, Commissioner Sager, Commissioner Hawks, Commissioner Mangus, Commissioner Wheeler.
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, thank you. I'm gonna turn this over to Matt Hasty. And I'll let you go ahead and get going, because there's a lot of information to cover in the next hour. And thank you, everybody, for joining us.
And I don't know if Taylor wanted to say anything before I got going.
Maybe Taylor wants to.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say thanks, everyone who is attending tonight. So this is a joint workshop for the Planning Commission and the City Council to talk through the updated, you know, the revisions to the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Development Code Amendments.
Can you speak a little louder, Taylor?
It's hard to hear you on the side.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll just hand it over to Matt if you want to. I think Matt can introduce it fine, yeah.
All right, I'll go for it, so. No worries. So, happy to be here. Thanks for having me. As Taylor said, and Melanie said, we've got a fair bit of information to go over. And so we're gonna kind of walk through our presentation. Kate, actually, on the screen is gonna control the presentation. And I'll just kind of give her prompts occasionally to kind of move forward. And so what we're gonna talk about are some of the same things. I understand that Taylor had kind of a small group or one-on-one meetings with the councillors and got some feedback on some specific questions we have around some of the housing strategies we've been looking at as part of this Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Strategies Planning Process. And then we met with our Technical Advisory Committee just a few weeks ago. We got some feedback from them. So what we're gonna do tonight, we're not gonna go through the entirety of all the potential Development Code changes or strategies. We're gonna talk through some specific issues that are things that, when we've talked about this before, generated more discussion or, I don't wanna say concerns, although occasionally, certainly when we had the community meeting here. So I'm gonna present basically a slide or two to talk about each issue. And then I'm gonna tell you what we heard from the tack on that issue in terms of their recommendation. And then see what y'all think tonight. And so this is not formal approval of any of this. This is, we're still in workshop mode. We will be back in front of Planning Commission and Council for public hearings on this. We'll also check in with our Technical Advisory Committee one more time before we do that. So it's more just to kind of take your temperature one more time and see if you have any, see where you are on the recommendations we have at this point. See if you have any concerns or anything, you know, you want us to be continuing to think about as we move forward. So we'll kind of roll through that way. I've got a couple of intro slides too. So I already kind of, oh, one other thing I'll mention, I forgot to mention a second ago. At the last part of the presentation, we're going to present and talk through some proposed policy amendments that would be mostly additions and some revisions to policies in the Housing Chapter of your Comprehensive Plan. So we didn't, we haven't had a chance to talk through our Technical Advisory Committee with those. So we're gonna talk to you tonight, see what you think about them. So far, we'll go back and talk to our tack again about those. And then again, come back to the Planning Commission and Council. There's also some Comprehensive Plan narrative that goes along with those. That's kind of excerpts from all the technical analysis we did earlier. So we're not gonna go into that in any detail. We're really gonna focus on the policies or the potential policy amendments. So there'll be two or three slides on that towards the end of the presentation. In addition to the strategies, a lot of which revolve around Development Code Amendments. So, next one. So this is just kind of a reminder of where we are in terms of the schedule. Not gonna go over this in any detail, other than to say what I just said, which is we'll be back in front of our Advisory Committee and then the Planning Commission and Council in the coming months. We've got some placeholders on the calendar to be talking to the Technical Advisory Committee in July. The Planning Commission in late August. And the Council, we have a couple of potential meetings on the calendar for early September and early October. So that's kind of the general schedule for coming back for those adoption hearings subsequent to this workshop. All right, so this is just kind of a reminder that in the Housing Strategies Report and the documents that we've talked to y'all about before, it's kind of four different categories of strategies that we've talked about that are up on the screen now. Some have to do with land supply. Quite a few of them have to do with updates to your Development Code. And that's, there's probably more of those that we're gonna talk about tonight than in the other categories. But there's also some that have to do with incentives for certain types of development and then some funding strategies. So those are kind of the buckets. And just kind of a recommendation that, or I mean a reminder that as we've gone through these, we have identified first preliminary staff recommendations in terms of relative priority. And then also covered that with members of the Council previously, as well as members of our Advisory Committee. So that's what those little speedometer-looking things refer to. And you'll see those at the bottom of each of the slides where I talk about these strategies. All right, thanks. So kind of start out with one that's related to land supply. One of our recommended strategies had to do with rezoning land. You're kind of right on the edge of when we looked at housing need projections out 20 years out. We're kind of the edge and on the edge in terms of the relative supply of land zone for medium and high-density housing. And one of the initial things we talked about was actually rezoning some of that land as part of this process. We heard some concern about that in the community meetings we had about the city just coming in and proposing to rezone a bunch of properties. We came up with sort of a modified approach to that, which was identify some areas where we think as a staff and based on the analysis, rezoning would make some sense in the future to the extent property owners come along and want to do that. So the current recommendation is to provide some policy directive, direction towards that end in your Comprehensive Plan that says, hey, somebody comes in for a rezone. The city's generally going to be supportive. It doesn't mean you're absolutely going to approve that. But it's sort of, we use the phrase here, kind of prequalifies those areas for a future zone change, but recognizing they'd still have to go through a zone change process. And we have identified where some of those areas would be. They relate to proximity to services, proximity to other land that's already zoned for medium or high-density residential development or mixed use. So we've kind of got this information that provides some direction on those locations. But we're not proposing to come in and actually go through our rezoning process at this time. So, next one. So we talked to our tack about this. They generally thought, yeah, that makes sense. That's a good idea. They like it better than to come in and do that rezoning now as just a city. They did express some comments and concerns about, hey, if you're, if we're going to do that, let's make sure that information about those areas is pretty readily available to people. And people know that there's a policy in your Comprehensive Plan that talks about that. So just make sure that you're letting people know about that if we're even going this far, kind of down the road. So that was the recommendation from the tack. And the question for y'all is, does that make sense? Do you support that generally, or do you have any concerns about it, or other things we should be thinking about?
Any thoughts on that?
Just to be clear, the bubbled-out areas there are areas near services. So it looks like we have the Timber Park circled there. And that would just be considered a service that we, anything in proximity to that would qualify then?
It would, again, it would say that's an area that makes sense. All other things being equal, to think about rezoning. Or support rezoning for if a property owner came in and said, hey, I would like to rezone my property. They'd still have to meet all of the approval criteria for rezoning. But you would have sort of a policy direction that in terms of relatively appropriate places to rezone land, that would be an appropriate place to consider. Does that, does that make sense? It doesn't, it doesn't totally qualify it or approve it. It just provides some policy direction that it makes more sense than, say, someplace that isn't in close proximity to either services or higher-density zoning. See, Joel.
First of all, is it possible to zoom in on that? Because like, you see the bubbling, because I can't see bubbling. I just see colors. Any glasses or something?
Think we probably, it's not an interactive map.
Can you possibly show something that kind of shows where the bubbles at, so I can see if the question I have is correct?
So like, so is it including, like to say, let's take the Timber Park, for example, that green area there. So you're not suggesting rezoning Timber Park? You're suggesting rezoning the areas around the Timber Park?
And again, we're not suggesting rezoning anything right now. But to say those areas, all other things being equal, make sense to consider if somebody came in and put in an application to rezone their property.
So like those circles that go, like circle, 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 that go all the way up. That whole, inside that whole circle would be like one of those recommended areas if people, I'm using the wrong word, but that would be likely to be.
Yeah, you would have some policy direction in your Comprehensive Plan that said, these areas make more sense than others to rezone if somebody came along and wanted to do that.
Okay.
And I'll read, we'll get to.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, no problem.
The other thing, I think it might be worth mentioning too, that we're really just thinking about, like, this, this would not really apply to lands that are designated for industrial uses, for example. So all of those properties that are north of the Timber Park that are currently unincorporated, unless the city decided to, to rezone them from industrial to resident, to some kind of residential, then this sort of prequalification option wouldn't, wouldn't apply to those properties because they're not currently zoned for any residential use.
Did you hear Taylor?
Yeah, I think I heard. It's really quiet, but I think I got it.
Have you encountered any jurisdictions that have done this well, as far as like preloading this policy? And then when it comes time to actually do that, it's more seamless?
So I will say, I haven't worked with a ton of jurisdictions who have done this. This was meant to be kind of a somewhat, a more flexible approach and a more interim approach than actually going through a rezoning process. So it still gives everybody sort of plenty of flexibility to make a different decision. But it gives you and the applicant some sense that, hey, the city's already, at least generally looked at areas in the city that might make more sense for rezoning in the future, but it's not a guarantee. So, Jerry.
I think you were going to jump on this. You were talking, but so when we're talking about the policy directive for rezoning and the application process. So when an applicant comes in to request a rezone, are we then as a Planning Commission or the city, or are we setting up these directives or parameters as to like, okay, well, you qualify for that and you don't, or how's that going?
It's more that the applicant would be able to say, there is policy direction in the Comprehensive Plan that says that there is some policy support for this rezone in that policy, in that part of the Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay.
It doesn't mean, again, that you don't have to review the application for consistency with all the other approval criteria you have for a rezone. But it does say that you have some policy support in the Housing Chapter of your comp plan for a rezone in this area, if someone comes in and proposes that. Yeah, Joel.
So my, I think I'm starting to recall the concerns I had with this approach before, and that was a couple of things. One is the, the approach is, A, if we start getting people that want to rezone, you're gonna get pockets of different zones. And it's gonna be hard for it to track, first of all. And second of all, rezoning on, does affect the people around in that neighborhood. So if someone gets zoned suddenly for high-density, and they have houses on both sides and across the street, that could not only affect property value, but also satisfaction of the residents living in that area. So I think if we're gonna put a process like this in place, that the residents that are affected directly from that property should have some sort of say and weigh in on that, on that process. Or what happened with that, because otherwise, we're just kind of taking that from and only considering one person when it affects everybody in that area.
A rezone has to be done during a public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And they would definitely have.
So we retain the right to say no, then?
Oh, yeah.
If it's like everybody else around us said they don't like it, then we can say no.
Well, as long as, you know, you have to show that it's consistent with all your approval criteria. And yeah, absolutely, it's still done through a public hearings process. That's why I'm trying to be careful to say, this is not making that zoning decision now.
You're getting into an area where, again, it makes me concerned, because
Yeah.
it's been said before, where if we get, if it meets all the criteria, then we can't say no. And that's where it concerns me, because, well, we can't say no, but we, it may end up in Luba. So, and that's what I want to us to avoid, is putting ourselves in a situation where we've made a condition for the, all the residents, where we can't do anything but either go to Luba or say yes. And we've already dealing with some things like that, and we don't want to do that.
And I understand the concern. I don't think this would put you in that position. It's really kind of one part of one criteria.
Could convince me otherwise, because the picture says otherwise right now, based upon what I'm seeing. So.
So I guess what I'm understanding is concern about, would this sort of tie your hands and force you to do something that you might not otherwise want to do, especially if there was a lot of opposition to this? Is that another concern?
So I think, I think, again, I want to make sure we're getting to what you need from us during this time, given that we're, we're.
Because I've got 10 more questions, just like this one.
Right. So, I mean, we would flag this one as a concern, a potential concern that we need to kind of work through. Is that a general consensus there?
Yeah, I think, I think it would come more down to policies where you had to come down to it, so, yes.
And I will sort of point out the specific policy language later too, that would be added related to this, so. Any other concerns, comments on this? Among any, anybody else around the table?
I think we're good.
Okay, awesome. All right. So, next one. So this one is talking about increasing allowed density. And really, it's both a combination, it's a combination of increasing allowed density or reducing allowed lot sizes in certain zones for certain types of uses. So it's not for all housing, it's not in every place. But it does sort of depend on the zone and the type of housing. And what I'll say generally is the idea here is to, in places where you already allow certain types of housing, allow for it on sizes of lots or densities that are actually financially feasible. Because I think, not only I think, but in some of your zones, it's very difficult from a development feasibility perspective to actually build the types of housing you currently allow, given what some of the densities and lot sizes are. So for certain types of housing called middle housing, so that's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and common wall or townhomes essentially, or cottage clusters, it's essentially reducing the minimum lot size. For multifamily housing or apartments, it would mean increasing the allowable densities, both in your high-density zone and also in your mixed-use zones. So again, it's not for those types of housing, it's only in those zones. We're not talking about other zones, but for the middle housing, it would be in more sense. So, next one. So in terms of kind of what we heard from the, from the Technical Advisory Committee, they said, yes, that makes sense to them. They supported those recommendations, I think. With most of you all in our small group and individual meetings, we heard something similar. Some of the tack members that, you know, we could even potentially lower the minimum lot size further for common wall housing or townhomes, even further than what we had suggested in the draft code amendments. So that's where, that's what we heard from the tack. And want to know, do you generally support what we're proposing here? Or again, any concerns?
I think this came before in a conversation that we had when we presented this. And I think there was a pretty hot button for us at the time. So I think this is something that would go into much further conversation than we'd want to do with, because he has other questions, but I know that was a hot-button item in the past, so.
What was the gist of it? Because I wasn't here.
We didn't like the, the reduction in lot sizes, what was a big thing on there, those are arguments against it. Primarily because we saw what happened, and the lot sizes that we reduced up here.
Is this, is this what we're talking about? This is not reducing lot sizes for single-family detached homes, so I want to be clear about that. It's just for these middle housing types, flexes, cottage clusters, and common wall homes. And then in your higher-density zones, where you all already allow for those types of housing, apartments essentially, it's increasing the allowable density in those areas. And I think that, yes, we did have some conversations about this in previous meetings. I think in the individual and small group meetings, a majority of folks said, yes, this makes sense. That's what we heard from the tack. And I'm not saying that there isn't any concern about it, but I am reflecting what I think people talked about in the earlier meetings.
So this is basically, you've got a 5,000-square-foot lot size, you're allowing a duplex on there and 2,500 square feet per, or a triplex, depending on however it works out. But I think you gave some examples in, so this is allowing.
Yeah, we just have to go for offsets and things like that, with some meat, but the house, the size of the house, like a duplex or triplex. As long as it still meets, I think is what it was.
Right, right. So the general idea is to allow for, for, what do we call it, multifamily housing within other established.
Yeah, we'd be allowed for what we call middle housing, so those smaller types of attached units, again, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or townhomes. And allow them at a lot size that they can actually be developed at. Yeah.
I know Jerry had his hand up.
Oh, no, he asked my question.
Okay. It's answered. I said a follow-on question. So I think what we are doing is, when we talked about this in the past, when we reviewed the Housing Needs Analysis, had to do with, some made sense to look at that, some we didn't even like the idea of having. And then I think other ones were, yes, I understand putting more on there, but you're gonna have a much bigger structure. So trying to put a bigger structure on a smaller lot forces it to creep on that offsets of other ones. And then we're, I think this, we're just coming out of a fire season, a big fire, so there's a lot of concern in that as well. So there is a, there's a lot of discussion. I'd really like to review the, some of the discussion notes that you had from that before I have more to weigh in.
Just out of curiosity, what was the acceptable lot size that you guys determined?
Basically about 2,500 square foot per unit, but again, that's if it's a duplex or a triplex or a quadplex. Because what you require now, it's simply you aren't gonna see any of those kind of homes built in those areas. Because it's, somebody's always gonna build, frankly, a bigger single-family detached home on those lots than two smaller units of a duplex or a triplex. And that was the other sort of idea behind this, was actually, you're right, sometimes the structures may be a little bigger, although not much bigger than, at least for a duplex, than what you'd have on a 5,000-square-foot lot. But the units themselves are gonna be smaller.
Our typical lot size is 7,500 in the city, minus a few areas. So you're looking at, if you're doing a 5,000-square-foot lot, you're offering three units, that would push it to 7,500 square feet, right?
I think essentially what we recommended, I don't have all the details in this presentation, was to tie, not to be allowing sort of more units, a smaller lot size than what you allow now for a duplex, than what you would allow now for a single-family detached home.
That's my question. If you're saying that it's 2,500 square feet for a three, per unit, and we have a duplex, it's a 5,000, fine. If it's a triplex, it would have to be 7,500, right?
Exactly.
And the setbacks would still apply.
Yeah, the setbacks would still apply, the lot coverage requirements would still apply. Talk about parking in a little bit.
Yeah, parking was a big issue on that.
The heights would still apply, so we wouldn't change those other aspects of the, of the site development requirements.
That defines, I think, the final piece for ever.
Do we have any of these in the process at the moment? Duplex, triplex?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, and I think frankly, part of the reason is because the lot sizes you require now make it not financially feasible to build those types of housing.
We have an incentive for builders to come out and build those, and you're saying that is the one option.
I'm saying that the, that the lot sizes you require now is a barrier or an obstacle to building that form of housing. So we, the whole sort of basis of this project was to expand the variety of housing types people could find in Estacada, and to also incentivize some smaller units for people who have less money. And this is one of the ways to do that, because right now, you essentially have a barrier in your code to building those types of housing.
Obviously, cost-wise, for the builder is gonna make more money on a house, single-family house. Does the city offer any incentives to come in and build a plex at all? Or do we have any plans?
No, not at this point.
Well, what is gonna draw somebody to come in and build that? I mean.
Well, it'll, this will, there's a couple of things. One, this will create an opportunity where now there's really not an opportunity, because there's a barrier. We'll talk about parking in a minute. That's one thing that might offer more of an incentive. This just kind of creates the opportunity, frankly.
So for instance, in R1, it's still 7,500 square foot. That's what, I'm looking at the code, recommended code changes. The single-family dwelling is still 7,500 square feet. And a duplex or two-unit common wall is 3,750, so it would just split that. But per unit, yeah. But then if we go into the higher residential zones, then the R2 zone, I think, was where it changed. 5,000 for a single-family, but only 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit for a duplex, triplex, or fourplex. So when you get into the, you get out of R1 and into the higher densities, it makes it more feasible to do that. R3?
Yeah, that's why I was saying, if, if right now it's 7,500 square feet, we're not suggesting allowing a triplex on that same lot in that same zone.
So, so at this point, though, this is, for this recommendation, it's trying to come up with a proposal to overcome the barrier that's there now. We can hash out the, the numbers or whatever down the line. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so from that standpoint, I mean, do we feel like, like this one's at least a good idea to, to move forward with and then hash out more later?
Yes, with caution on one thing. The people of Estacada have expressed time and time again, they don't want a 10-foot between houses. They don't want squished housing. And that's what we have to consider, and we have to take into, when we're thinking about these. We don't want the ton of houses squished into tiny areas, duplex or triplex or not. We have to keep that in consideration. We need space, we need to look like a neighborhood and not like, you know, a set of row housing and stuff. And we basically, you've heard the term plenty of times around the area, don't Portland or Estacada. We don't want to put what they've done in Portland and bigger cities out here in Estacada. It's not the culture, it's not what the people want. And it's our job to make sure that we consider that while trying to find the, the solutions to those barriers. So that's your challenge there, is to try to find a way to do that.
Sure. Well, I agree with your comments. You need to be careful the way you phrase it, because every R1 and R2 zoning is five-foot setbacks, which puts 10-foot between the houses, which is pretty standard across all residential zones. Until you step out in the county where it's a 10-foot side yard. So three feet, yeah, you're pushing that. And it, going back to your fire, forest fire comment, when you get to those measures, there's automatic things in the building code where you have to put drywall, do other measures to create that fire barrier. So that's not necessarily a development code, it's a building code question when it comes down to that. But again, 10-foot between houses is totally normal across the spectrum. It has been in Estacada since before I was born, so.
And we're, and we're not, again, we're not suggesting any, there's one place where we're gonna talk about a change to your setbacks. But for these, we're not talking about any changes to the setbacks.
Yeah, or the heights.
Jerry.
Okay, so originally I was just gonna say, you know, I, I'm cool moving forward with this. I would just like that, that very small number up there, that 1,500 square feet per unit, to be not even considered. But then to Joel's statement, you know, I understand that you've heard that a lot from people in Estacada, but I've heard the opposite from a lot of people in Estacada, that in some areas, having, you know, having duplexes and townhomes wouldn't, you know, that would be, you know, inviting. It's, you know, I understand we travel in different circles, but, you know, the, I've heard the opposite, that having some townhomes, you know, three-unit townhomes or duplexes would be, you know, something that would be inviting in some neighborhoods.
Oh, and I'm not saying that not to get on, I'm just saying the, the squish portion of it.
Yeah.
I get it. So we need, you got what you need there, okay.
I think so. Okay. So this one's kind of the opposite end of the spectrum. And this is really just applied, would be just applied to your higher-density zones. So the R3 zone, the NCR, the MMU and the CMU, so your mixed, your mixed-use zones and your higher-density residential zones. And one of the issues And one of the issues here, or the issue that we're trying to address here, is that you have a limited supply of land in those higher density zones. And that those zones really are intended to have higher density forms of housing, apartments, and some of the other attached types of housing that we just talked about. But if you don't have some floor on the density in those zones, they will get developed with single family detached homes if you also allow those types of homes. And then you will run out of land for higher density housing. And then you will be forced to look at, frankly, or almost forced, you will really, really need to look at rezoning areas to higher density housing. So the point here is to preserve that land that's already zoned for higher density housing to get developed for those forms of housing, which is what your comprehensive plan intends it to be developed for. So we are suggesting establishing a minimum density in those zones. And what we talked about with our tack was somewhere between the minimum density would be somewhere between 50 and 80% of the maximum density. So next slide. They generally said, yes, this makes sense. These minimum density requirements, they suggested going with kind of the lower end of that percentage range that we presented them with the 50% rather than the, rather than the 80%. So that would mean where we're suggesting a maximum density of 30 units per acre, the minimum would be 15. Where we're suggesting a potential maximum density of 50, the minimum would be 25. And that's kind of equivalent to like, I would call it somewhere between a townhome development and like a two story apartment building. That's kind of what those max, those minimum densities equate to. But it would kind of make sure that you got the types of housing in those zones that they're intended for. So that's what we heard on that one in terms of general support from the tack. So questions, comments?
So as far as this, can you roll back one slide for me?
Sure.
So this was R3, North City Residential, Mill Mixed Use, and what's the CMU?
Commercial mixed use.
So all those zones are already identified. So this is just going to be an additional regulation on top of those zones that are already classified as high density residential.
Yep.
We're not imposing this on, say, an R2 type zone or R1.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
So does this establish standards then? Is that because this one confuses me. Is is this a standard range that would go in or are we?
It would establish, so what we're, it would, you need to tell us what should it be at 50% or 80%? What the tack recommended was 50%. So it would basically say that somebody needs to develop at least 50% of that maximum density if they're developing in themselves. So that's kind of where we are now with the recommendation.
And where did the 50 to 80% range come from?
Those are sort of typical standards or or percentages used in other jurisdictions. I know I've heard, don't do what Portland does, but there's a bunch of jurisdictions in the Portland metro area. And they are required to use 80%, all of them, not just the city of Portland, but Hillsborough, Cornelius, et cetera. So 80% is kind of the high end. I haven't seen anybody else use 80% kind of in other parts of the state. But where jurisdictions have something like this, they usually set the floor at somewhere between 50% and 80%. That's just kind of the most typical standards that are used. So you guys would be kind of the low end of that.
Yeah, seems like the low end is the good end of the recommendation there.
So that's where that's where the tack came down. That's where we are, right?
From a builder's standpoint, how does that?
Uh, it's 3,000 square feet per unit. So that's a little bit more than half of a R2 minimum lot size.
But from a, an actual builder's standpoint, is that something that would be attractive?
I'm probably not the right guy to ask that. I I try to do single family stuff just because it's what I do. I know from talking to other people in the industry, if they're going to come in and do an apartment or condos or whatever, they're going to look at that 15 units per acre and they're going to say, how many more will get on there? And they're going to slide that scale up to the 100% mark and try to get 30 units per acre, whatever that is, because yeah, because there's a certain point where, you know, your cost is in your groundwork permits and all that stuff. And the more you can build up, it's just more coming in on the back. Makes it more economical.
Have you talked to any molding family contractors and seen?
So we, one of the folks on our consulting team worked for a company called Johnson Economics. They're essentially a market analyst, analysis firm. He did work for multi-family contractors kind of all around the state. So we reviewed all of this stuff with them to make sure it made sense to them from a development feasibility perspective. We didn't go out. We actually did have some interviews with some multi-family developers who are working kind of in this general area to talk to them about what they thought some of the barriers were, what they thought may have made sense. This was kind of in line with what we heard from them and what we heard from the folks at Johnson Economics. Yeah.
Just a quick thought. So this, so if a, if a multi-family developer wanted to come in and do something, we don't have to worry about them minimizing that because they're probably going to maximize it to the extent that we will let them. But we're trying to prevent it filling up with single family houses where we don't have the higher density zones. And then we have to look for another area to rezone. So we're just trying to make sure that it gets used.
Yeah, it's kind of preventing you from having more problems down the line, frankly.
Okay.
Just to give some perspective on this, there's the townhomes that are across from the library and before you get to the laundromat there. That I think there's 10 units in there and that's 0.63 acres. So that's right in line with what this is. And they're just townhomes, I imagine 1,500 square foot. They have a garage under them. And there's a lot of parking on that site too. So you're, you're right in that ballpark with this regulation. While you could still slide it up and stack another floor on there or maybe two floors on there and get to that 30 units.
Yeah, this, that's the thing. This at least sort of pushes you towards that form of development essentially in those areas. Where that's what you're saying you want to see.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Good on that one. Okay. Um, next one. So facilitate missing middle housing types. I talked about this one a little bit before. Again, missing middle, when we say that, we're talking about those different types of flexes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes that you just mentioned. And then what are called cottage cluster require, or cottage cluster housing, which are small detached units that are oriented around a common courtyard or open space. And so there's sort of a few things here. We've already talked about one of these strategies, which was strategy three around the reduced minimum lot sizes. This we're talking about is permitting those types of housing in R1 and R2 zones where they're currently not allowed or there are conditional uses. I'll talk about parking requirements under another strategy, strategy eight. We're also talking about facilitating or allowing internal conversions of single family detached homes to duplexes and triplexes. Even if they wouldn't otherwise meet that minimum lot size. So it's, you wouldn't be able to expand the building, but if you had an existing house, you could can do an internal conversion essentially to a duplex or a triplex in some of those cases. So that's what we're talking about here. Next one. So what we heard from the tack, they had some concern about kind of going too far with this in the R1 zone in particular. But they did think it made sense to allow these types of housing even in the R1 zone, but no more than a four unit essentially development. So it could be up to, it could be a one of the plexes or a four unit cottage cluster or a four unit townhome, but not anything larger than that. And just generally, this is in line with the recently passed middle housing legislation, the House Bill 2001, that communities, basically over 10,000 population need to meet around the state. And again, they, they recommended, yes, allow for those internal conversions. Even if otherwise, you wouldn't be hitting that minimum lot size in those zones. So that was the suggestion from the tack. So we want to see what you all have to say about this one.
I think it's a good idea to put allow for duplex, triplex inside those. I think a quadplex kind of gets a little far in my opinion, but as long as it's still meeting that requirement of like 2,500 or something like that per per unit, it makes sense to intermix those.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
So Jerry? If we, if, is it both? So is it both fourplex and four unit cottage clusters? Or could we do scratch the fourplex and but still include a four unit cottage cluster?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay, because I, I I'm not a big fan of anything, you know, of the fourplex or bigger. But a four unit cottage cluster, I mean, that seems realistic and, you know, it would fit perfect in a, you know, in a lot, so.
Okay, other, great. Other thoughts on that? Do people generally think that makes sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Cottage cluster, it's a cute term. Where have you seen?
Um, so I'll tell you about a few places I've seen them. One, uh, that's kind of an odd place, Yahats on the, on the coast. If people visited Yahats, pretty small town. There's some cottage cluster housing there that's been around for quite some time. I was really kind of surprised to see it. But I've seen some there. Bend, again, much bigger place, but there's been a number of cottage cluster developments built there. Also on the coast, Newport, there's a development in Newport called the name of that development. But they sort of purposely mix different housing types within that development there. And there's a number of cottage cluster developments within that development in Newport. And then, yes, there are some in Portland. There's not like a ton of them in Portland. What actually you see more often in Portland, frankly, and they're much older, are kind of courtyard apartments. So they're very similar to cottage clusters, but they're attached instead of detached units. And there's just a ton of those. And I see those kind of in communities all around the state. Those smaller, because they predated zoning regulations that don't allow you to build this stuff now in most places. Joel?
One of the things I've noticed, and I've seen a lot of those, they also have in Forest Grove, I think some in Hillsborough. I've seen a lot of cottage clusters. Well, everyone I've already seen, there are much larger lot sizes. They're not on smaller ones. They have like 10,000 square foot lots and things like that, 12,000 square foot lots. Because there's a lot more spacing between the units that has to be there and tend to tend to put gardens and things in between the cottage clusters. And so I would be concerned about the lot sizes along with those cottage clusters and the middle lot size requirement. Maybe the spacing required or per unit or something, just so that we don't get some sort of like squished. Again, that squishing, I'm using the word, I don't have a better word for it. I apologize, but but yeah, this is, it's not a cramped size, so we can keep that consideration in there.
I think we were, we, I think the minimum was 2,500 is what we talked about already. So that for a four, four, or a four place cottage cluster, it would be a 10,000 square foot lot.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, we still have to meet the minimum sizes. All right.
But I understand that, that concern.
Yeah, I just, I just, I think it's harder to get, you're not going to find as many 10,000, 12,000 square foot lots or whatever inside of a R1 zone. Usually there's 7,500 in most cases.
Yeah, it might ultimately require somebody to consolidate a couple of lots. And it might also be something that you see more frankly in not as so much an infill product, but where you've got a larger piece of property that hasn't been developed yet and somebody can subdivide those lots so that they have something that makes sense in terms of the layout and the size of the units and meeting all the other requirements that you would have. So.
So just to play devil's advocate a little bit here. We're talking about putting four units on a single tax lot that's owned R1. What's the difference between putting four small units on four individual tax lots that are 2,500 square feet apiece and creating an R4 zoning or something of that nature?
So I guess a couple of things. One, like in terms of what you'd see on the ground, there might not be much difference at all. Two, you, you could have, so this gets to be a complicated question a little bit.
That's why I wanted to ask it and have you explain it.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if y'all are familiar, this is where it gets complicated. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the recent Senate Bill 458, which basically says, hey, in cities that are subject to middle housing requirements, which you are not, you're small enough that you're not subject to those requirements, where those cities allow development of, let's say cottage clusters, they also need to allow those lots either at the time the cottage cluster is being developed or afterwards to subdivide, to basically split to have a middle housing land division, it's called, and split those up into individual lots. And part of the reason is because then you've got kind of fee simple ownership of not just the house, but the the piece of property underneath it. So you could, when you allow cottage clusters, you can allow them either to be all the units are on one lot, or you can allow them to be on their own separate lots, but it's sort of, you're starting out with, you need to start out with this development on a lot of the certain size, and then you can divide them up if you so choose or put them all in one lot. So you could allow for both of those things.
Can I, can I, can I jump in, Matt? This is, this is Kate.
Yes.
Just to add to the, the sort of difference between a cottage cluster and, you know, small lot, single family. A lot of cities typically require individual, single family lots to have street frontage, to have access to a street. And on a cottage cluster, the units that are, that could be to the rear, might not have frontage on the street. They might just have access from a driveway or a pedestrian walkway. So I think that's one kind of significant difference between those two forms.
And also typically, again, kind of the idea behind a cottage clusters, and I'll, I'll get to you in a second, Joel. Is that they are oriented around this common open space or courtyard. So that's one of the requirements within your code is that they would have to kind of have that orientation. And you would be, you would need to have some pathways that connected folks to that open space or end order parking areas. You also, with this type of development, allow for some shared parking areas and as opposed to having parking on every, associated with each individual building, but you can do it either way. You know, there's some flexibility there. So, Joel.
I just want to touch base here. We've got about just over 10 minutes.
Yeah, we're going to run out of time.
How many? And we've got 10?
Uh, 10 or, let's see.
Or more.
Five more, five more plus. Yeah, plus the comp plan, policy amendments, which we may need to just kind of get your feedback in some other form on that.
So what do we want to make sure we accomplish in the next 10 minutes?
I mean, I would say we keep going through here. We get to as much as we can. And as a follow up to the workshop, you all could send us, I I would, we could send you out kind of a little again, informal poll, like, do you support this? Do you have any reservations? There were some individual meetings or small group meetings with a number of you previously. And we got some feedback that way. And that's partially what we're basing these recommendations on now. But I don't know what the alternative would be other than just trying to get through as much as we can
Okay.
in the time we have. But I would say, let's kind of tell me what your concerns are.
Great.
Or if you support something, and then let's go on to the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have more on number five then?
Uh, yeah, one concern I have with with this, and we're kind of getting into allowing these into like R1s, is what would we have to stop, stop a developer from putting, you know, an entire section of land, 10,000 square foot cottage, you know, four unit cottages and making this massive amount of cottage homes inside of one area? I mean, that's not something I think we'd want to do. We'd want it intermixed with like single families. And so it has a good a good, you know, mix up and sort of like a whole bunch of you know, housing stuffed into one area. That's almost the same thing as you said, is a 2,500 square foot lot, the same, in the same, you know.
So I think good question. I have an answer for that one, but it's something we can think about and come back to you with some thoughts on.
We've done a little bit of that with the short term housing, where there can only be a certain number of that in an area.
Subdivision.
So maybe something like that to consider.
So again, that's when I want to try to work out the solution now, but I want to hear the comment.
Is it possible that we could schedule a second workshop with with Matt here? Because then we'll have potential councillor Dunsmere and Mayor Drinkland back in to also weigh in their thoughts, so they're not completely out of, you know, ability to speak to the planning commission and have their input as well. And we're about halfway through, so we'd have a lot the other have to go through as well.
So I'm hoping we get through one or two more, maybe.
Yeah, let's keep going. I think that we could push it maybe 10 minutes past. I wouldn't want to go longer because I know there's people waiting here to speak tonight. I think our council meeting is relatively concise, so it shouldn't take us too late. But I do know that the public comment's right at the front. And so I know a lot of people wait too long, but we could, let's try and get through as many as we can. And then staff can go over things with you as well, because we want to keep this process moving forward.
All right.
Okay.
Next one. Okay. So next one's related to accessory dwelling units. I think everybody's familiar with that, that kind of housing. You already allow these. We're talking here about some potential tweaks to what you already allow with accessory dwelling units. So the tweaks would be, one, to allow some Um, so the tweaks would be, one, to allow some uh, lower setbacks, um, rear yard setbacks where somebody has an accessory dwelling unit. Um, two, to allow an increase in lock coverage um, for uh, except when you, when somebody um, applies or, or wants to build an ADU. Um, and three, to allow two accessory dwelling units if one of them's internal to the existing home. Um, as opposed to a detached unit. So those were the potential tweaks here. Um, and generally, um, what we heard from our tack was those things make sense, that they were concerned about going too far on the reduced setbacks. Um, so not to reduce the setback less than ten feet, um, the rear setback. Um, the other thing we talked about with them was um, you could apply an even a little bit more of a setback for a second story. Or if the building was more than twenty-five feet high or something like that. Um. So that's one. Um, two, they thought, yes, um, it would be okay to allow two if one's internal. And if you required another off-street parking space for the second ADU. Um, right now, state law says you can't require additional parking spaces for any, for an accessory dwelling unit. And the tax said, if we were to allow us an extra one, you should allow, you should require another off-street parking space for that. So that's what we heard from the tack on this one. So that's concerns, questions?
I need to think about that for a minute.
When we can always get back to you.
And you always get back to me, that's the thing. Yeah, totally.
Call us or email us, but if you're thinking about this, tune on it later.
Will, will we get this presentation sent to us so we can kind of review?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and all this too is in um, kind of described in more detail in the, um, the report that, that y'all have. So, yeah. All right, we'll go to the next one. My favorite subject's parking. It's always, it's always a good one. Um, we're spending a lot of time on things or just generating a lot of discussion. So um, existing parking standards. So we're looking at potentially um, reducing the required amount of parking for those middle housing types that I talked about earlier. Um, and also possibly for um, multifamily housing within a certain distance of transit stops. So right now, you require for a duplex, four spaces, for a triplex, six spaces, for a quadplex, actually only four spaces, which is kind of weird. But that's classified as multifamily in your code. Um, and you require one space per multifamily unit. So um, and for commonwealth dwellings, you require two spaces per unit. The suggestion from us was um, from the consulting team and staff was, we would have three spaces in total for a duplex. Um, four spaces in total for a triplex, or five for a fourplex. So that would actually be increasing number by one total. Um, and one per unit for Commonwealth, commonwealth dwellings. And I'll tell you in a sec what the tax said about that one. Next one. Um. So next slide. There we go. So um, they thought the recommendations for the plexes generally made sense. It's essentially requiring one space per unit plus an additional space for those types of dwellings. Um, they thought it could make some sense to allow for only require, and again, this is what you would require. If somebody wants to provide more parking, they can. Um, for um, townhomes, I will say that most townhomes, you end up with two spaces. Because there's generally a driveway space and then there's a space in the garage. What this would do would say, um, what the tax said was, you could require just one, but you'd also want to uh, make sure that. Um, or you'd require two, but you'd provide a credit for an off-street space or an on-street space. So if there was enough space in front of the home to park a car, they'd get a credit for that space in front of the home. If there wasn't, they wouldn't get the credit. They'd have to provide two spaces for the commonwealth dwelling. They did not um, recommend reducing um, the parking uh, requirements for those multifamily um, developments within a certain distance of transit. So they said, no, we don't think you should do that. So they'd said, some of this we like, some of it we don't like. And we, we think we should modify the, the townhome uh, reductions. So we could spend, and we probably could have spent the full time talking.
You probably could have. So what you came up with here, if you could go back a slide, I think that's probably what we want to see here. Was this a compromise over what was, or is that, that says initial proposed standard?
Yeah, so what the tack recommended was a compromise or a sort of a tweak to that. Um, and I think when we first talked about this, we put out there at the low end, you could go to just one space per unit for all of these types of units. Similar to what you currently require for multifamily. Um, we're also not proposing any change to what you require for a single family attached. So. All right, yeah, so the tack recommendation is kind of a compromise.
Um, you guys have heard many times, I mean, put my thoughts on parking and the street width and things like that. So. And even more recently, um, I've been kind of exposed to what that looks like when we don't take that into consideration. Uh, uh, on-street parking is a serious issue in some of these newer neighborhoods. If you ever tried to drive through some of the streets during the baseball games and things like that, you know exactly what I'm talking about. You can't, sometimes you can't even get a single vehicle through there. And God help us if you have to get an emergency vehicle through there during some of those times. This is an issue that we, that we need to take great consideration on because it's, it's already showing a problem in our city. Uh, uh, parking spaces requirements, I think are a big deal that we need to consider, make requiring that they have enough adequate parking. Or a minimum, minimum street width, where if we're going to give them on-street parking, that you can put two vehicles and still drive two vehicles through there. Because if not, you're going to end up with the same problem over and over again. And it could potentially cause a very serious issue. If we had a, maybe we had a serious evacuation, you got a bunch of cars parked there. It's, it's, it gets bad. Not to mention it's dangerous for people. I mean, I was almost hit this, this weekend, just trying to walk across the street during one of the baseball games. Because people couldn't see me trying to pop down the road. So that's a, that's something we really need to consider before we start allowing to take, to take away parking spots. So.
Some other thoughts on that?
I, I agree. I mean, even, you know, even, it's not just the newer developments. I mean, my, my neighborhood was developed back in the uh, mid nineties. And I tried driving up, tried driving up Edge Hill at pretty much any point of the day. And it's sing, it's single car, almost all the way up to the, uh, uh, past my house to the cul-de-sac. So um, you know, I, I agree with the street width, you know, uh, if we're going to reduce onsite parking. We need to make sure that we have adequate, adequate width of streets to uh, accommodate that.
Yeah, and we could definitely come back with some modified requirements that address, I think, that concern. But yeah, definitely here.
Something where it has to be considered a street width before we.
I'll take a capital M on that one for modified.
Yeah, okay.
I think one thing you're going to probably encounter with these developers too, is that if you're talking about reducing the onsite parking by one space. Versus blowing out a right of way, another eight feet to accommodate another travel lane and on-street parking for both sides. They're probably going to say, let's roll back to the old standards and let's just keep the off-street parking. Cause it's going to be more cost effective for them and their density is going to be better.
Yeah, so if given the choice, they'd probably just put more parking on them. Yeah.
I would think so.
That'd be a win.
Well, okay. I mean, again, got the comments and we can come back with a couple of options for you on this one, I think. Um, I've got two more. We could try, I think the next one will go pretty fast and then maybe we should.
Well, let's, can I do twenty seconds for a public service announcement? Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. If you are wanting to speak during public comment time, there's some forms over at the table in the um, stand-up rack there. And maybe some laying on the table um, to fill out if you wanted to speak. Or if you're here with the group and you have one spokesperson, they can just fill that out. And I thought that might save us some time between this, the, and when we end this meeting and start the next one. And then we'll collect those and hand them to uh, councillor Strobel to call people up to speak. Okay, end of public service announcement.
I, I do think the next, the last two might go pretty quickly, but we'll see.
Is that okay to keep going?
And then I would say we should get comments on the policies via email or some other, you know, some of the process. Yeah. Okay, so this one is about um, allowing for development on what we're called non-conforming lots, non-conforming in terms of the size of the lot. So um, so right now, somebody could have a lot that's less than minimum lot size. It's vacant, it could accommodate a house. But it wouldn't be able to because of the lot size. Um, we're recommending that you could allow a home to be built on those lots. Um, in part, this sort of keeps you out of trouble for taking the value of somebody's property and not allowing them use of the property that's zoned for residential use. Um, so we're recommending that um, you allow development of single family um, duplex or commonwealth dwellings on undersized lots. Um, but that the, the development has to meet all the other development standards. Um, so it's still got to meet setbacks, it's still got to meet part off-street parking, it's still got to meet height, it's still got to meet all the other standards that you have. But that somebody is able to develop those lots if they have a non-conforming lot. Um, and uh, next one, uh, pretty strong support um, from the tack on this one. Nobody really had registered concerns when we talked to them about it.
So good with that one, thoughts?
Yeah, just as long as we have a, some sort of a conditional review of each one. Maybe the planning commission comes back and says, yes, it makes sense what they want to put there or not. There's some sort of recommendation before it's approved. So, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay. All right, last one. Um, construction excise tax. So this is one of the ones we'll talk about in terms of um, financing or funding measures. So just as a quick reminder, a construction excise tax is um, something that um, the state authorizes local governments to um, assess. It's essentially a one-time tax on construction of housing. It can be up to one percent, so a city doesn't have to assess the whole one percent. It can be half a percent and it can be anything up to a hundred percent, up to one percent, excuse me. There are some requirements too in terms of if a city does assess that tax, how they spend the money. So um, there's a bunch of stuff that kind of goes with adoption of a construction excise tax. Um, this was one of the recommendations that the um, the Chad committee talked about. They recommended against this. Um, we still wanted to have some further discussion about it with our technical advisory committee. Um, we did some quick math in terms of what might this generate based on projected amounts of housing development and estimated per year. And that's what the little table on the slide shows um, is um, it would potentially generate somewhere between a hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. Not a ton of money, I'll say, you know, it would, every little bit helps. I like to say that too. Um, but it's not going to generate a lot of money and it would take a certain, it's not a, not a, not a light lift, let's say, in terms of both adopting it and then to some degree administering it. So next one. Um, so the tax said they really don't recommend adoption of a CET. They didn't see enough, like the benefit cost ratio to them wasn't high enough to pursue this. So that was where they came down on this.
I think we've shut this thing down time and time again. So I think it's kind of been the consensus that we don't want to add another tax to people buying houses. So. Don't see the benefit in it.
This is owned by the SDCs.
Yes, yeah, it would be a separate.
And just in case anybody's wondering, permits right now for a seventeen hundred square foot house are thirty-two thousand five hundred bucks with all the SDCs, water, building permit, all that stuff. So this would add another seventeen hundred and fifty dollars onto that. So if it was at that one dollar per assessed value. So if the whole uh, product that's conversation is figuring out some housing affordability, I think we're working in the wrong direction. And a, as a builder and somebody that pays permit fees regularly, it, it kind of works against that whole mindset of trying to get the houses more affordable. Um, and, and you're really putting it to single family homes in the community. New single family homes or people that are adding on to their houses versus a, a traditional tax, it would be spread across to everybody. And so you're picking, my opinion, winners and losers by targeting somebody that really can't defend themselves unless they're on a committee like this. Um, so I, I do have some bias in it obviously, but uh, that's where, that's where I stand on it.
I, I'm not hearing so far anybody say they disagree with the tack on this one.
And, and just to be clear, that is typically passed on to the customer. It's not absorbed by me, a building.
Generally.
Nor anybody else in the building community.
All right. That was my last one to talk about, other than the comp plan policy amendments. And again, I think we'll want to just send those out and have you take a look at those, give us some comments via email. Um, so we did manage to kind of get through at least all the strategies. Um, and we can go back to our tack, talk to them again, and then we'll be back to see you um, after we'll have the planning commission first and then the council.
All right, great, great.
So thanks for slogging through with me.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
So we'll adjourn this portion of the meeting.